I think I have 6:15. Good evening, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the June 9th, 2020, 6:15 PM Open Session Meeting of the Air Planning Board. Call to order. First item on our agenda is under General Business to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Second, please.
Second.
Okay, I don't know who got it there first, but thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as it has been submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry, I just noticed something. We'll talk about it under Old Business later on. Thank you. So, first on our agenda is the continuing public hearing for the special permit for 14 Washington Street. Oh, and by the way, I'm sorry, I'd like to welcome the folks who are joining the meeting tonight, not on the board. Welcome, and if you would like to speak up, by all means, just unmute and speak up. So, continuing public hearing for the special permit for 14 Washington Street. Mark, would you like to do a quick intro to this, please, for us?
Yes, this is a continuation of the special permit for public hearing for 14 Washington Street, which is the old fire station, which is being renovated into six apartment units. Kyle is presently trying to get into the meeting, so he will be able to explain soon. There are some changes, though, to the plan, which they started putting in action last week. And the change to the plan will require a concurrent additional site plan application for the proposed work in the Page Moore parking lot, which is immediately south of the fire station property.
Okay. Actually, Mark, I'm gonna ask you to pause for a moment, please.
Yes.
I have multiple Kyles on my screen, and I'm not sure Kyle is actually with us yet.
I am, Jeff.
Okay, thanks. I just... Thank you. I don't know if you heard what Mark said?
I did. I've been here the whole time. Sorry about that. I've been...
No worries.
Yeah. There we go.
Kyle, I've got three. Thank you, Kyle.
Two, two.
No, I just, I didn't want, I didn't want to give you a hard time, Kyle. I just wanted to make sure that we had everybody on board.
Sure.
The more the merrier. Okay, thanks. Sorry, Mark, too. I have interrupted you.
I want to, we should, and there's also the concurrent site plan for the fire station. So there are three aspects of this that we need to, especially at the next meeting, keep straight. One is the original site plan application for the fire station renovation. The second is an additional concurrent site plan for the work on the parking lot that Kyle will describe this evening. And the third element are the special permits for the parking off-site and for the reduced parking and the offset, or I should say, the setbacks in the building. There's also a waiver or two in there as well. And it is my understanding, in speaking with Kyle, that they are looking for continuation of this after we discuss it this evening, but they're looking to continue the case until June 23rd, at which point hopefully we will have enough information to act on the plan. So at this time, you know, it's, I see tonight as a progress meeting where Kyle can update the board on the anticipated changes to the plan. DPW is still reviewing the drainage calculations and the parking lot geometrics, so we don't have feedback from them yet, which we always like to have. So tonight is really more of an update on the new plan and how that ties in with what we've already seen.
Okay. Kyle, does that sound, that's, we just covered a lot, but...
Yep. No, that's right. It's a slightly complicated plan as we're pulling in then the Page Moore parking lot. If I could share my screen, Cindy? Okay, in the absence of being able to share my screen, then effectively, we we have a plan worked out that does effectively an integration of the Page Moore parking lot that's to the south of the fire station. It reconfigures that Page Moore parking lot so that it, it works with the fire station. It creates planting islands around the fire station, leaves room for us to effectively recharge a good portion of the roof of the fire station.
Excuse me, Kyle. Screen sharing has been activated.
Oh, okay, great.
You can't see. It popped up in my chat, so.
I think it might, okay.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
On the screen, then, is, it's sideways, so north is to the right. Washington Street is down at the bottom of the page, and the fire station is is in the upper, kind of in the middle of the page, so.
It's that dotted area.
Yeah, it's this hatched area existing, and then this is the portion of the building that was an add-on garage that will be removed. And so what we're proposing to do is to have a pair of two ba- two pairs of spaces coming in off of Washington Street, leaving the former fire station doors, which will be sealed shut and somehow made decorative in an architectural way, which I don't know exactly what the plan is, but to kind of continue to emphasize the and pay homage to the fire station as it was and put, you know, a little green space in front of that. Other green spaces will be left around the fire station for plantings to, you know, kind of keep that a nice feature, and also to kind of bring it into downtown. Now, it will be adjacent to this parking lot, but there'll be a break between the parking lot and the building with green spaces and various landscaping. So what also happens, the reason to bring in the Page Moore parking lot is so that the parking to the south can then be used to make up, to be nearby, to provide parking for the apartments in the fire station. And, you know, also to maximize the efficiency of this parking lot, which is central to downtown and, you know, that will serve air quite well in this tight area that is very near the rail station. And part of that is predicated on our request to allow for what is called the Parking Management Plan, and it's effectively a justification of why it is that we would request the, a reduction in a parking requirement because of our near proximity to so much multimodal transportation. The bus line has a station at the, at the train station. There's the train itself. We'll also put in bicycle parking pad sidewalks will be connecting to downtown and so on. So we're really making it a feature here in this building. And, and that's, you know, along with the the various special permits and the waivers that would make it work for the fire station, there's also a similar, though not identical, set of special permits and waivers needed on this Page Moore parking lot, given that these two are essentially being merged into one kind of comprehensive area in the downtown. So DPW, just a slight correction to Mark. DPW does not yet have our updated drainage calculations. That's been in the process, along with the geometry that's been developing. We are overall reducing impervious area in this layout and increasing stormwater recharge. And in conversations with the town engineer, as well as with the superintendent, we've kind of arrived at a fitting resolution up along Washington Street and in principle on the drainage approach. And we just have to put that into numbers. There's a bit of time taken up and to get us to that point. So within the next few days, we should have that application reworded, as well as drawings and calculations over to DPW and to the planning boards so that we can proceed. And however it is that it's reviewed, the parking lot being somewhat separate, as considered as a separate plan, from a drainage standpoint, this is all really functioning as one unit, and we're going to look at it that way. So we can include those calculations in both applications, I suppose. We'll have to work through some of the technical procedural matters of the application, but Mark's been very helpful, so we'll, we'll get that handled. Are there any questions about this layout? I know I'm just sort of waving my hand around it. If there are any specific questions, please, please ask.
I was muted, so you got lucky there. Yes, I was gonna say, Mr. Krantz actually asked a question.
Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, I want to be sure that I'm reading the plan correctly. So Kyle, I'm going, what I'm gonna ask you to do is work with me as I go through and interpret the plan, and just, if you would, correct or confirm as I move along. So if I, when I read, when I read this, I look, okay, at the front of the fire station, which would be toward the bottom of the screen, reflecting the east side of the project. I see four parking spaces, two to the north and two to the south, flanking the garage doors. So far, I'm right?
Absolutely right.
Okay. And then if I look at the south side, which is that perpendicular line, thank you, Kyle. What I count there is eight spots, and then there's a possible space for snow or something that's closest to the curb, I think, or the sidewalk. Is that correct so far?
That's right.
So I count, so right away, that's 12 spots, right?
Okay.
So what I'm, I guess one of my first, you know, so confirming the math, eight plus four is 12. We got 12. How many are we looking at here? Ultimately, I've heard nine, I've heard 10, because you have to have the I heard 10, because you have to the visitor, plus you gotta have an ADA. Then there's the issue ADA, which may be deferred, because this isn't an ADA compliant, there's not gonna be an ADA compliant unit. So give me a sense of where we are with the actual count and where you would like a waiver for the count, et cetera.
Okay. Fair questions, good questions. And I, that's part of what is, we're gonna try to nail down over the next couple of days as we finalize the wording of the application. I think the intent that we're proceeding into the planning board is that, number one, we have this parking management plan, which, again, maybe is a misnomer, but it's an attempt at a justification that due to its proximity to downtown and so many very, you know, types of transportation systems that are available, and that they are single-unit apartments, that we would request that we go down to just one parking space per unit plus one for visitor. And the part of this is, we prefer not to specifically encumber the other spaces that are in this parking lot any more than is needed in order to meet the needs of this development. And that seems like a reasonable way to approach it. So we would be looking to say that these four spaces are on this property. It's not very feasible, practically speaking, with other amenities that are appropriate for this fire station redevelopment, to get the remainder of the parking spaces to fit on the property. So we would be looking to, in this adjacent parking lot, I'm not sure where they would end up, which are the proper ones to give. Maybe it's these back here. But to put three parking spaces reserved specifically for this development on this property or the portion thereof that happens to be on this property. At this point in time, there's no plan to redraw any property lines, so there would need to be some legal document drawn up in order to, I suppose, convey rights and to dedicate rights to these parking spaces on this property for the use, exclusive use of the residents and visitors to the fire station. I think practically speaking, people may park here and come into the apartments anyway, but, you know, who knows what will happen. But that was the plan, the structure of it. The idea of it was to give, to dedicate three to the fire station. As far as handicap parking goes, I, I'm not certain that we wouldn't still be required to have an accessible space somewhere in the vicinity of this. Even though the units are not accessible, I think that typically the Architectural Access Board of Massachusetts views those two items separately, site and architecture. So we may still be required to put the appropriate striping and so on for a handicapped accessible space, even though there are no such units in this building. Doesn't really make sense, but we just have to confirm that.
Well, actually, handicap parking spots are for more than just mobility-challenged people. So they would still be able to access the building even though they need a handicapped spot.
Okay.
It's not just about people who can't walk upstairs.
Okay.
Good point.
Then there, then there would be the justification for making it happen.
I think it's based on a count, Kyle. You'll have to check on it, but I thought it was over five spaces. You had to start including a handicap. I'm doing it off the top of my head. I have it on my computer, but I'm on a different computer, but... Anyway, the long, I have a few things when Jonathan's done, so if you want to finish up Jonathan or whatever.
Yeah, I will, Ken. I just wanted to, thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Julie and Ken. The other thing I was wondering about, just to clarify, if we look again toward the bottom of the screen and we see the opposing arrows, thank you, right? Yep, no, 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 move back, for the entrance and the egress to the Page Moore parking lot. So it looks like, so what we've done here in the drawing is we've shifted some spaces that are currently there, and we've moved them further north, crossing the property line, right? So could you clarify for me the entrance that you see marked here with those, the opposing arrows? Is that the same as what exists today, or is that shifted at all in the curb? Oh.
It is, it is shifted.
Which way? South or north?
To the north.
To accommodate more spaces in the remainder of the lot, to make it more efficient?
To make it more efficient, that's right.
Okay, so that's, so I'm just putting the picture in my mind. So you moved it further north so that you have to move the spaces further north, that is, on the side of the building. But the net, the sum is that this enables you to have, more appropriately distribute the asphalt to be spaces. Is that a good summary?
It's fair to say that the shifting of the entrance further to the north, the existing entrance further to the north, in conjunction with the geometries surrounding the fire station, make for a more efficient parking layout and maximize the amount of parking that's available overall in this downtown area.
Okay. And just to point out, the square with the dots in it, yep, there you go. That's the contained dumpster area?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm through for now, if someone else wants to leap in.
Ken?
Okay, so Kyle, let's start with the concept that you're gonna put the parking across. Basically, you moved everything about, if a parking space is 18 feet deep, for all intents and purposes, everything moves 16 feet closer to the building, roughly. It's about two feet there, and you cut into the little slope that's currently there that a week or so ago is unbuildable. But all of a sudden, now it's buildable, which is great.
Ken, yeah, I think it was totally, totally buildable before, Ken, but it was, it was impossible to get a set of inward-bound parking spaces standalone due to the grades there. But because of the retaining walls that will be placed out in front of the building to protect the footings of the existing fire station building, we can now make use of this space while keeping some green space, you know, you know, positive, you know, deposited all the way around the fire station to kind of help, help, help its appearance, really.
Okay, so when I first looked at this, the disappointment that I had was that although you stated that there was a more green space or more pervious, in my mind, by adding, by taking away the current green space that was there, the net result between the two might be less green space and more pervious, but I haven't calculated it or looked at it that closely, because that was a good 16, 18 feet of a grassed area that was there before that now becomes paved. That was one thought. I am concerned about the ADA requirement, because if in event that we have to do the ADA requirement on your first set of site plan regulation, site man drawings, excuse me, it showed the need of it being potentially a van space, which is quite wide, almost the equivalent to two parking spaces. So I think it's important to know right away that if it is an ADA-required space and it is van-compatible, that we, again, lose more green space in front of the building. So it looks cute now, because, you know, the two spaces are small, but if that space on the right increases, like the original drawing, we lose the green space in front.
I'm not sure that, you know, and you're right, that there is a need to identify that in this unusual situation, what is required, and that's part of what we'll do, but I don't think there's anything that would require that the handicap space would end up here. It could end up over here.
Right. In either event, you might, because of the requirements to the adjoining parking area for the width required, takes up almost another parking space, is what I'm getting at. So just keep, you obviously know that.
That's, that's correct.
So I was, I was concerned with the fact that the building originally had the ability with the walkway to get to the apartments in the back pretty much off of grade, and there were no steps. And now because of, you know, things being lowered to accommodate for the new parking, you've had to, you know, build stairs. And that potentially, to me, is a a situation of rails, stairs, rails, snow shoveling off of steps, and, you know, whatever it is. But I understand there's no ADA requirement, so that's really not out of our, you know, pocket at this point in time. But it is a concern that originally there was, it seemed like a walk that you could go around the building pretty much at a small change to grade and not too many steps, but that changes with this, this particular approach. As far as the dumpster is concerned, I haven't concluded or been told if that dumpster is gonna be a shared product for both sites, or if it's gonna be assigned to this, and there'd be another dumpster required for the existing Page Moore building.
There isn't going to be a separate dumpster for the fire station and final arrangements for the way the trash will be handled. It's a discussion that happens with the trash company. I guess it's, I forget the name. But I don't see that the trash dumpster would be used by the fire station. Instead, there'd be bins and totes typically for that residential use.
Okay. So in that event, then, the parking spaces that are, again, the eight that are there, the very final one bumps right up against the corner of the dumpster. It's kind of an impractical approach with the doors swinging open and a truck coming in to get at that dumpster. It probably won't work in the real world. The guy probably gonna have a real tough time backing in to pick up any kind of, with a truck in that situation. The dumpster should probably be more accessible than where he's showing it, but it may not be any place to put it. Or angled, potentially angled, so the truck could angle. Anyway, it's, it's tight.
Ken, there is some room here between the wall that's proposed. It's a couple-foot wall. That grading I had to finalize, but there's a little bit of room there to make this area larger and for this to sink back into this space, so the gates recess from, I assume you were talking about this parking space?
Yeah, right, exactly. A person trying to get in and out of there would be pretty rough with the...
Yeah, well, they'd probably come out here and drive like this, but there's ways that we, you know, we'll, we can look at reconfiguring this in such a way that it's not such a burden on this parker here.
Yeah, exactly. So you might end up losing, between a handicap opportunity and that space, you might end up losing one number, is what I'm getting at, over there. It might become a seven.
That might happen, that's right.
Which would be more reasonable, I would imagine. I have a couple of other things. The retaining wall, the retaining wall height, I, first of all, I just, I'm not sure the other planning board members know that we got, Jeff and I got a draft from yourself and from Mark Ashenbo of what you're talking about tonight. The draft had quite a lot more notes on it, so we had the ability to look a little bit at that draft before tonight's meeting. So we had a little bit of a head start on the other folks. So the walkway down the, on Washington Street, as we know, the town is gonna show that as a concrete walk. And the walkway on the right-hand entrance up by your bike rack is a concrete walk. Yet the other walk seems to be shown as a bituminous concrete walk. My preference would be that all is concrete, especially that walk there, the longest one. So it matches up to the town's work and matches up to the work on the right-hand side of the building. And I think it's a higher-quality requirement. So I'd like to see that. The...
Yeah, I would, I would second that, yeah.
It's just, you know, okay. And the space between the actual parking, nosed-in parking spaces, the new ones you're talking about that are being built, and the walk itself, is that proposed to be like a granite curb or there's some transition? I'm not sure what's going on right there. What you would think about that, that, that spot right there? Originally, in front of the building, you had granite curbs breaking off the seven parking spaces or so that were in the front and the building. My suggestion is that, you know, you put that kind of quality into those parking spaces on the side and just to give us a real, you know, a straight return between the, a new concrete walk that I thought about and the potential pavement on the other side with a granite curb, similar to what the town would do for detail on the street, or what they will do, actually. So that's, again, something for you guys to consider. I think that's, if we wanna make this to look really like a real high-quality piece of work, those kinds of details will stand out immediately to your eye. Granite and, and concrete versus, I don't know, bituminous and bituminous or nothing and bituminous, whatever the return is gonna be there. So that's a couple of thoughts I'd like to see.
Ken, if I may?
Yep.
What you're saying when it comes to the granite curving, basically, you got a nosed-in parking space.
Yep.
Transitions to a piece of granite curving, which has a reveal of maybe six inches. I forget what the reveal is currently now in town.
Usually six inches.
So from the, from the, from the finish, you go up six inches to then the top of the granite curb, which is at the same level as the concrete walkway, which Kyle's showing us.
That's what I, I believe that's what he intends to show, and...
If I may ask, Kyle, if I'm sorry to fall along, can you move, move up about to the first doorway? There. Is it one or two steps up to the door? Do, I don't know, I can't. In my haste, I left the set of plans that Mark so graciously printed for me on my other desk.
Right. So we're working with an existing elevation, floor elevation inside the fire station. So there are two steps here at the walk.
Yep.
There's another two up into the building here. Over here, there's one, two, three steps up, and then you walk in.
Straight shot. Okay. So the elevation change between the concrete walk with the, the walkway and the entrance to the building on the lower door, 7, 14, 21 inches, and on the upper door, about the same amount, two steps.
Something.
Seven and a quarter inch reveal if it's, if it's wood. I mean, concrete, as we all know, can vary, can vary.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
I just, I was just trying to give you a feeling for the, and they will not require railings. The three-set might. No, it's a two-set.
Here's, there's a set of three. Maybe this is spaced out, and we would try to take a look at that as well from a, from a railing standpoint.
I'm just trying to give you a thing. I mean, I, I would second Mr. Diskin's view on the granite, because the building itself, if I remember correctly, actually has granite trim.
Yeah.
And a brick front.
Foundation.
Yeah, so. Kyle, thank you, by the way, for doing this. I'm, you guys done a lot of work this week. I know that because I've seen you more than I've seen the guys that work for me.
No problem. And those are good comments, and I'll have those discussions.
They got a couple more.
I do understand the intent of what you're, what you're suggesting, and I, I will, I will have that discussion.
Thank you. Ken, you got a couple more?
Yeah, a couple more. Okay, so the typically when we do a site plan approval, we require site lighting in the discussion. So in this particular case, I presume we could have either building-mounted lighting, which cannot see the source of the light, unlike other projects, which we've voted on yet have been installed with being able to... yet have been installed with being able to see the source of the light, or some standalone site lighting going along the new parking spaces and walkway to the back of the building, either a boller type or a site lighting that would be unacceptable to matching a downtown look. Again, without the ability to see the source of the light, as we all know, is required. And.
My understanding is the building, will there be building-mounted lighting?
Okay, well, you want to say what I'm saying, those, those spaces would get, would need, and the walk would need adequate safety lighting is the word I like to use.
Yeah.
So if the architect comes back with that, then we, somebody in the town should review that kind of quality lighting and make sure we get the right safety lighting for the wintertime, or anytime for that matter. What else we got here? Okay, so I guess we're still at the point where we would see, need to see, you know, the final plan and the final list of requests for waivers clearly, and then we can vote accordingly. But this is, you know, I think we're on the way to a better, better plan here. If I had my preference, that'd be zero parking in front of the building and that would all be landscaped. But I think we all have to be reasonable at this point in time.
I, I.
Ken, may I?
I, I'm chuckling because I see the, well, that's okay, Mr. Diskin, we can agree to disagree on that.
Yep.
At some point in the future. Do you have any, Jonathan, I'm sorry, Ken, are you done?
I'm all set for now, thank you.
For now, thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to reflect on this. This project is special because it's an historic resource and a source of pride for the town that we want to last for generations. And I really think that we need to bring that lens to this, that I know that there are some things that can be difficult and inconvenient, but we're talking about something that, this is our probably last realistic shot at this historic property that we'll have, and this, we should be thinking a hundred years out, or perhaps more, about what this is going to be. And that's why things, it may seem niggly to get into all these, you know, petty, these details, but it is important because we want this to be as, as good as it can, up to the merits of the building itself. So yes, and I think the granite curbing, that makes sense, the continuous, you know, concrete sidewalks, that makes sense. But you know, I have to agree with Ken, I would love to see all the spots moved to the Page-Moore and free up that front so that you get, we get the revel in the building itself. It'd be the top number one preference here.
Mr. Chair, may I jump in with some comments?
Of course. Nathan, you're going to be next, and then I was going to make Julie talk.
Julie, oh, good, good, yes. I just have four because Ken, Ken got one of mine. But I'll just follow along with what Jonathan said. I, you know, I agree, I think, you know, this is, this, I'm glad to see this building be developed, and I think it'll be, you know, an anchor for the town. So thank you, Kyle, and the others who are working on it. The, let me pick up on what, maybe here's an alternative, Ken and Jonathan, to those parking spots. And the suggestion I would have Kyle is that that eastmost spot that you've added along the south, yeah, yeah, that east spot, if we took that out and put a tree there or some landscaping, maybe even, it might even give a little bit more room down by the dumpster to fan those seven remaining out. You know, I think that might, that might speak to the interest of having green space along the Washington Street.
And not to, not to say that that isn't valid, just that there is a, an island here that's intended for a tree of some sort.
Great. Okay. Yeah, I think that probably will get called out in the final, in the final plan, right?
More clearly, yes.
Yeah. Okay. The second is, you know, another way to address the parking, and this is just a suggestion. I know it doesn't make, I understand it doesn't make economic sense as far as the return on investment, but that second floor on that building, I don't know if the developer would consider making that a two-bedroom, which would reduce the parking requirements by one. And so it would simplify this and give a little more diversity to the air's rental marketplace.
I have a comment on that.
Please.
Response, Nathan, he submitted drawings, actually part of the original site plan. We showed the architectural, but the, there's been an application made for federal grants and whatnot based on the bedroom count and the layout and the architectures that are done, so to ask to make a change like that down would be too late a process.
You'd have to go back, yeah, the grant's already set, okay. Yeah, I just know, you know, we have interest in rentals and not just one-bedrooms in, in air. So the next, next development. And then the, the last thing is, this is more directed to Mark. You know, I don't know, Mark, if we've ever had a parking management plan done yet as part of a, as part of an application. And I guess my expectation is that this will be a narrative and it'll be written down in, in the application. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Yes, Nathan, you're correct. We have yet to receive a parking management plan under section 9110, but you know.
That's not true.
No? All right. Well, we'll be seeing quite a few more of these with the form-based code being used.
He doesn't mean that you haven't sent one, Kyle, he just means that this is the first.
Oh, very good.
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen, I haven't seen it in writing.
Thank you, Ken.
He sent, he said draft copies to Mr. Ashenbow and others at this point.
Yes.
But it will be, yes, there will be a formal parking, and it's part of the application for the site plan.
Yeah, and I'm all, I'm all for talking through it and getting an understanding, and then, you know, then I think it needs to be written down, but it sounds like you're on, on path.
Can I ask a question to Mark?
Go ahead.
You know, the, the plan depends on the ability to shift those spaces from the south to the north across the property line. Is that, Mark, is this just legally and procedurally, we just need to know, but is this doable? Is this a viable process? I mean, I think we should know earlier rather than later, because all our decisions are predicated on it.
Excuse me, that's why I directed Kyle to prepare a second site plan application to incorporate the Page-Moore parking lot changes into the entire plan. Because I believe the prior public notice did not mention the Page-Moore lot, it did not include spaces in that lot, so we need to bring that in. And both the special permit parking issues that we have to deal with and the site plan both involve both lots. So I think as long as the, the new site plan application and special permit decision references that, I think we're, we're fine.
Okay, thank you.
You can ask Julie to go, because I've got a couple more.
I'm sorry, I muted myself. Bonnie's home and she's on the phone, she was walking around. I was, I said, any further questions from the board?
I've got some.
Please do, Mr..
There may not actually be questions, but I'm trying to expand on Jonathan and Nathan's mindset, and another idea came to mind. It looks, it looks apparent, Kyle, that we'll need to have submitted a landscape plan as part of the set, which we don't have now. We're speculating about what the landscape would be. So I'd like to recommend, and that the planning board concur that we need to see a landscape plan, rather than just say, this is what's going to land here, this is what's going to land there, and speculate about it. So in the approval, you know, when we finally sign off, we know, we know with confidence that we've approved X amount of trees or lawn or whatever it is. And I have one more thought for the developer to consider and for the, if we, I believe the developer has done another project downtown, I might be wrong, where pavers were used instead of actual blacktop as a parking area. So I'm not sure if it would make sense architecturally and maybe just appearance-wise to think about those two, those four parking spaces in the front to be done with a concrete paver designed for that kind of wear and tear versus blacktop, which might really tie the.
Yeah.
The lawn, the building, the pavement into the whole project, which is a brick concept to begin with, a brick building downtown. So that's just an idea, but I think it would add a touch that might really bring it over the top, just a question.
If I may, I might, I can't ever tell if I'm muted or not, yeah. If I may, Ken, you asked about the lighting earlier?
Yep.
And what I was thinking about is the building currently has sconces, I believe, on it and lighting on the building, and I think there's lighting on the parapets. I'm not quite, I don't exactly remember this building, but I would even think that if they went to a lighting style that may not be as modern, but may be a marriage of old and new, I'd be open to that, to maintain the look of the building also.
Yeah, the problem is we don't control that unless we see the architecturals or elevations, which we're probably not going to see. So I'm just throwing it out there as input, but.
Yeah, I, I'm also making the same plea.
We don't want the glare. Nobody wants that glare anymore.
Exactly. I'm also making the same plea. The way that building sits, the glare would be on the parking lot, currently empty lot across the street and uphill from it. I think the building, front line of the building is actually out in front of the neighboring property.
Yeah, okay.
I'll take a look at it when I get, when I get a chance to get over there again. These have all been great things, guys. Anybody else on the board have anything they would like to add?
Anybody else have a thought on the pavers for the parking area instead of blacktop? I don't know, I just threw it out, but didn't hear anything.
Well, I.
I think it's a great idea.
I, I will, because I'm in professional snow management.
Yes.
I, I will reserve my viewpoint, okay? Yeah. Oh, thank you, Kyle.
I think it's a great idea, but I don't know if I'm muted or not. I'm not seeing the outline light up.
Yeah, I can hear you, Jonathan. So thanks, Kyle. So, okay. Kyle, do you have any questions for the board?
No, I think I understand all the comments. Thank you very much. I'll have those discussions and try to move things along.
I appreciate that. Anybody, any of the public have any comments or questions while we're on this topic? Could I ask, Kyle, could you unshare for a second so I can see the group? Okay, I, when you share, Kyle, I can only see a certain number of people at once. My, my Zoom-ism's not that good. But thank you very much. Does anybody else have any, any comments or questions? Hearing none. I think we're at a point.
Could you make the group chat available so that if we need to make a comment, we can just sort of type it in there? That would be very helpful.
The group chat, excuse you, Mr. Valentine, is it?
Yep.
Okay. One of the problems with group chat is we are, we have to hold this as a public forum, and I don't know if group chat makes, makes.
It's recorded.
You see what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, I mean, you could, you could very easily announce or read any sort of comment that's put there, but sometimes it's difficult to get a word in edgewise when, you know, six people are talking at once.
Yep. Appreciate that. And like I said, that's why I asked Kyle to unshare so that I can see people, because it's, it's hard when I'm not in a room full of folks. But thank you. With that, I think we are at a point where we continue the public hearing. If everyone's in agreement for 14 Washington Street, let's accept a motion, please.
Make a motion, we continue the hearing to the next public meeting of the Air Planning Board on Ju-, June 23rd.
For the special permit application, 14 Washington Street.
For the special, yes, of course, yes.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Nathan and Ken. Moved in second, any further discussion on the, on the motion before the board? Ask Mark, you have a point?
Yeah, just, I'll, I'll continue the site plan application meeting to the same date.
Is that a friendly amendment, Mr. Krantz? Thank you very, he nods in the affirmative, thank you very much. Moved in seconded to continue the site plan and the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. Next on our, excuse me. I'm confused looking at the agenda, and I apologize, but it's easy to confuse me. Next is a site plan review for 14 Washington Street. We just, we just accomplished both at the same time, correct?
Correct.
Yes, thank you very much, I'm sorry. This takes us to, the next on our agenda, which is a discussion, Air Solar 2B site plan amendment. At this point, we're going to ask Mr. Diskin to recuse himself from the meeting. Ken, there's a thing called a waiting room, I believe.
Cindy takes me out.
Yeah, but we're going to put you in the waiting room. How do we get him back, Cindy? I want him back in a few minutes.
When you want him back, you just tell me and I'll bring him back.
Okay.
I'll work last time.
You're, you're so powerful. I texted him last time, I think, okay.
Cindy was already doing it while you were texting him.
We don't know, we don't know, we're old. I got gray hair. Okay.
Younger than me. He's in the waiting room.
I would also like to support Cindy's use of not using the group chat. I'm sorry, Chris, but we've had some issues personally, and I appreciate the silence. Thank you.
I'm actually glad those aren't part of the public record, to be honest with you.
We wouldn't want them read.
Okay.
But it would be part of public record, so.
Especially if Audrey's around.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Air Solar 2B site plan amendment. Mark, you want to kick us off?
Yes, the applicant applied for this site plan a few weeks ago, and we do have ninety days in which to review it from that date to make a decision, so we're, we're early in the process. The Conservation Commission has hired an independent consultant to do environmental and engineering, or more, I should say, stormwater review of the project. That's ongoing. DPW will also be taking a deep look at this in the near future. So I think tonight's, tonight's meeting should be, we request that the engineer update us on a few key aspects of the plan that we covered on the site visit on Saturday, and you know, that we, you know, ask any clarifying questions that might lead to any refinements of the plan, and then at the end of that discussion, continue the site plan discussion until June 23rd.
Thank you. Kyle, how's that sounding for you? Do you want to?
That would be fine. I mean, I certainly like the, the planning board to make its own determination. I'm not sure, I haven't heard anything from DPW, so I'm not aware of their status, but it's certainly, if there are other questions that the board has, I'm here to discuss and answer them.
Thank you. Then I'm going to recap, we, I'm sorry?
Jeff?
Yes?
Do, do we know what the status of this is with the Conservation Commission? Are they, is this under review by them currently or will be? What, what's the timeline on that?
Kyle, would you mind?
Conservation, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Conservation Commission is, as Mark had stated, hired an independent consultant.
If you can hear me, this is undergoing a notice of intent review with the Conservation Commission.
Sorry, Mark, you're breaking up.
Mark, I'm going to ask you to do that again, please.
Yes, the applicant actually filed for a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, I believe, prior to filing this application with the planning board, and that's in process. They have obtained a consultant to assist them with the environmental and stormwater review, so that's something that's ongoing. So I think that's, that's about it. So yes, the site plan has been accepted by the board for consideration, so the clock is ticking, so to speak, but we are relatively early on in the process.
Thank you.
Now's the time to ask questions of the applicant and get a little bit of clarification if you have any questions.
Thank you. For the general consumption, we did have a site, a site walk on Saturday morning. We walked into the site, took a look at it. It is both quite eye-opening and difficult because at this point, it is sometimes difficult to see exactly where the different features of Air Solar 2B are going to go in. It is fairly easy to ascertain where the panels will be, it's fairly easy to ascertain where some of the tree topping will happen. It's our understanding that they will be also planting some understory trees in that tree topping area. I guess the difficult part is, and Kyle did a pretty good job, I think, of pointing it out, of where the new road bed is. of where the new road bed is going to be. Um, some of the high points that I picked up from Kyle in, in the walk and actually looking at the plans, which are also sitting on my other desk, is at the DPW's request, I believe the first couple hundred feet are going to be paved, plus or minus, Kyle?
That's right.
Yep. Um, there is an elevation change in the road that they are, that it's not significant, but there is one there. And the rest of the features of the road are currently, um, I'm guessing the reason for the NOI work being done by the Conservation Commission in broad strokes, is that correct?
It's all good statements, yes.
Okay. And any other board members? That's pretty much where we stand with that. Any other questions for Kyle or observations you'd like to make, please?
I have one.
Yes.
And Kyle, this doesn't directly relate to our board. I serve on the CPC board as well and um, when I was reporting in and updating, they had had a question regarding whether this particular site plan also has to go through MIPA. And I know that probably come up with conservation, but where they were wondering if that has to go through that process again.
So we've already filed with MIPA. Uh, we're, we're in discussion with NHESP about whether or not this all constitutes a take and that is currently in process as a separate process.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I, you know, guys don't mind, we talk in acronyms sometimes. Please explain the two acronyms you just used to the general public.
Uh, Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act is MIPA. And uh, NHESP stands for Natural Heritage Endangered Species Act. So those two things work together. The Act is the legislation and the uh, Protection Agency is kind of the enforcement, I think, that deals with it. Although they're often intermingled and exchanged back and forth. Um, but they are the ones that are looking at the rare and, and, and potential endangered species, both habitat and species. So there is the Blandings turtle that is on, that has been observed on the property. And there is a significant amount of habitat that is available that may be reserved by conservation restriction or other deed in perpetuity for the preservation of that. Uh, the extent of that is still what's being discussed and is currently being dealt with uh, directly by Oxbow Environmental, who has been engaged. Not only did they do the original habitat evaluation for the stream crossing at the low point of the road, but also they did what's a separate uh, habitat evaluation for the entire rest of the property, which is some, you know, forty some acres. And much of it is, is good habitat. It happens to be underneath the overhead transmission wires and I guess, you know, that's, makes, makes the turtles happy. So that's, that's part of the lands that would be restricted that way for, for those turtles. So that's currently in process and discussions are being had to satisfy MIPA and NHESP.
Thank you very much. I, I won't ask you to tell me what Niptys is, okay? Another one we work with a lot.
Non-point discharge elimination system, yes.
I see. Yes, thank you very, I knew, I knew you knew that one right off the top of your head.
Stormwater point pollution prevention plan. So we go through all of them.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Other questions or other observations? Thank you, Julie. Yeah, Mr. Krantz.
Just a quick thing. I just would, there is a public trail that runs by the property that doesn't require going off into private property. So I would say to Julie and Nathan that if you have the chance to take a look down there, just to get a general sense of the environment, even if you don't know the specific route. And I want to also thank Kyle did an excellent job on our visit Saturday, matching up what we visually saw on, on the field with the features on the site plan itself. And I found that very helpful. But for Nathan and Julie, even if you just wa, stay on the public trail, you're going to see a lot of the space and kind of get a sense for the environmental aspects of, of the, of the plan.
Yeah, good to know. Yeah, sorry, that fell out of my schedule. I, uh, if I may jump in. The, I have a, just a question for Mark or, or maybe Kyle. Uh, the, the drawing I have is dated February 2020. And I received that May 22. I just want to make sure I'm all up to date.
So, uh, can sum it up in one word, COVID. Everything, you know, the date, what, the date of the plans that are in front of the Conservation Commission and in front of the planning board are dated 2/6/2020. And here we are, June.
I will say here we are, though. It's been a lot of work, Kyle. We, we all understand. It's been a lot. It's taken a lot to get us here, but I appreciate it. Okay, um, anything else about Air Solar, uh, Air Solar 2B Site Plan Amendment we need to cover this evening? Hearing nothing, should we do a continuation, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, if I may, just inquire, I, I don't know what is appropriate and what is inappropriate. So please pardon my, my ignorance of process with respect to other boards. And if, uh, if the planning board is able to act based on planning considerations, would we be able to keep, keep this moving?
I think that's a very valid question. One of my questions when, um, Mr. Archibald mentioned that the CONCOM has hired, uh, has hired a consultant to come in and take a look at it, do the water work, um, most, my, my, my biggest thought was, how long will this take? I will not speak for the members of the board individually, but I will speak, um, for myself at this point, as I often sometime, as I sometimes do. We do work with applicants who are very close to pushing it over the goal line. And approvals are done with um, language like meeting the need, meeting the requirements of the DPW and things like that. So I would like to see us continue to move forward on this, because this is a fairly complex prob, uh, fairly complex issue. I just don't know that we have any way of impacting the parallel timelines that are have, that are going to have to take place. Given the land, given the uh, extent of these, of the survey that needs to be done by the environmental folks that are not under our purview. It's, it's a terrible answer. I have a feeling, Kyle, but I want to keep moving forward.
And, and of course, with all due respect, I, I take that under consideration. I would just ask that if this board does not have questions that are not dependent upon decisions by other boards, as it should not, that it would consider moving to close as soon as its questions are answered, that are under its purview. And I thank you for your time.
And I would say that I would ask that we keep an open mind to that right now, Kyle, and as we get, as we get closer and closer, we'll, we will, um, keep that in mind.
Thank you.
But of course, I may not be the chair after this evening, so, you know, we'll see how that goes. I got reelected. We have to have a, we're going to have board elections very soon. Just, that's what, you see the look on Kyle's face. I did it to you two weeks, two meetings in a row, Kyle. I surprised you. With that, I think we're bringing, wrapping up Air Solar 2B, uh, the Site Plan Amendment. Oh, let me, a motion for continuation? One quick question before we go. Oxbow did the other feat, other area across the rail trail, I believe.
No.
You were saying, did Oxbow do?
So the, uh, Air Solar 1?
Yeah.
No. Trying to recall.
That's okay.
Believe, I, no, 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 that was David Crossman, BC Consultants.
That was, okay, thank you. Uh, yes, I do recall. I do recall that. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, yeah, mo, motion for, um, continuation on this one, please.
I make a motion to continue the site, uh, the Site Plan Amendment review for Air Solar 2B until our next meeting, uh, June, through our next meeting, June 23rd.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second and any further discussion?
Just wanted to clarify also one thing. Um, this, I understand we're also waiting on DPW feedback. So I'm interested in moving as fast as we can, but I think that's also out there. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentience, thank you. Could we invite Mr. Diskin back in from the waiting room?
I can do that.
Thank you very much, Cindy.
I feel like there should be some special music, you know, while he makes the move.
We're not, we're not.
There it is. It's a tone.
Recording. I feel like we're in Star Trek.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Diskin. Um, did you enjoy your time away? Next on our agenda is, um, Site Plan Review for Cannon Gate Sandy Pond Road. And, um, Mark, why don't you touch the high points, please?
Sure. Uh, this is an application to, uh, address some changes, uh, in the parking lot over at Cannon Gate. Uh, my understanding is that most of the parking there now, well, pre-exist, obviously. Uh, they're proposing several new spaces and also drainage and stormwater work. My understanding too is that, uh, GPR is working, working up a new site plan for this, uh, which is in progress. Uh, they will be submitting their stormwater calculations and plans of the DPW here this week. And the planning department will also be receiving the updated full application this week. In, in our land use meeting last Thursday that we hold internally, Kyle was able to walk the participants through uh, the draft plan, which is a revision of the original plan for Cannon Gate. Uh, I think it would be good for everybody concerned, uh, for Kyle to walk us through that. Also, it's my understanding that Brian Lewis of 145 Snake Hill Road has some questions uh, concerning the plan, which I forwarded to Kyle as well. So basically tonight is a night to discuss some of the in-progress changes. We recognize that, you know, the plan is not quite ready to approve at this time and hopefully everything will be in place for the 23rd.
Thank you, Mark. Kyle, you're a popular guy tonight.
I'll tell you what, it's, it's not easy being me. So, uh, I, I do have an updated plan to share, if I may share my screen.
Is this is the one that you sent later on that was sent out today with the red on it?
That's correct.
I will also tell you where it sits. I apologize. I had a few, I got a few minutes on my large desk after my large, using my large format printer and I left them behind.
No problem. But, um, Cindy? Cindy?
It says it's still on. You can't share?
Uh, it, it says host this.
There you go.
What's the matter?
Can we please share, can Kyle please share a screen?
Yes, I'll turn that on.
Thank you, Cindy.
Better keep an eye on that.
No worries.
You should be on set.
Very good. Thanks. Very good. I got it. Okay. So, uh, now this is an unusual project. I appreciate everybody's patience and bearing with me as we try to help out these, uh, the 48 units in this development.
Excuse me, Kyle?
Yep.
Can I ask one favor?
Yes.
Can you go to about 60%? Can you just enlarge that a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Sorry. It's something you're working with all the time.
No problem. And I, I will zoom in. I just, I know you, it was probably difficult to read. I will zoom in on the different areas.
That's about the right size. Thank you.
Okay, great. And that really does cover all, uh, of the, the project. It just to, for orientation sake, up in the upper left hand is the driveway connection to Snake Hill Road, which generally runs north and south. Uh, and it intersects Sandy Pond Road, not in this picture, but kind of in this location where the hand is circling. So we have this driveway coming in off of Sandy Pond Road. Uh, and then it comes in, winds its way through the development and then goes out Snake Hill Road. And, um, one of, uh, Mr. Lewis's comments, and he lives, I think, right here.
Kyle, excuse me for a minute?
Yes.
If you don't mind. And Mr. Lewis, thank you for joining the meeting this evening.
Thank you for having me.
I did receive a copy of the letter today. I was able to get a chance to read it. Have the other board members had a chance to look at Mr. Lewis's letter today?
Oh, didn't receive it.
Okay, so and Mr. Lewis, this is, I, please don't, don't, don't think anything wrong with this, but, um, we all have, um, have town email. We don't always get to it in our day of the meeting.
That's fine. I understand. We're, we're short notice, by the way.
That's okay. If I may, what I'd like to do, guys, is, and I will do it in my slow voice, not my fast reading voice, is, um, read the letter to you that we received from Mr. Lewis. Excuse me. It starts out with, "To whom it may concern, my name is Brian Lewis at 145 Snake Hill Road. I am planning on attending the planning board meeting scheduled for June 9th, 2020. I have not used Zoom before, so I wanted to send in my questions and concerns in case I can't do it through the Zoom meeting. These are my questions and concerns about the proposed plans at Cannon Gate 75 Sandy Pond Road. Uh, heading drainage. It clearly shows on the site plan, page three, the existing storm drain water drainage from Cannon Gate onto the property of 141 Snake Hill Road. On all other site plans, there are no visible changes for drainage that is currently dumped into the stream that eventually drains into Flanagan's Pond. I'm concerned that the additional parking spots and expanded two-lane drive, driveway, excuse me, will dump more sand, salt, gas and oil into the existing stream with the frogs, turtles and spotted salamanders. The letter that I received from the planning board says that Cannon Gate is adding 10 parking spaces. But on the new plans presented to the town, it appears that there is an additional 31 parking spots being added. I'm a little confused on how many parking spots are being added and where all this water is go, all this water is going. Are they redirecting the storm drain water into their, their retirement pond? Is this in conjunction with a DEP file permit for dumping runoff stormwater that is contaminating into our wetlands? Under the heading electrical? The existing poles were 10 feet tall and provided 360 degrees of light that were located 15 feet from my property line. The two existing light poles lit up my whole backyard and were very obnoxious. The proposed new light poles are 15 feet tall and sit on a one foot, six inches tall, in, open bracket, 18 inches, closed bracket, cement sonotube. That will bring the total head of the light fixture to 16 feet, six inches tall. There are no specs for shields to block the light to the abutting neighbors. I am a master electrician with 20 years of experience with streetlights and parking lot lighting. At that height, I will be able to see the lamp from 175 feet away. My yard is only 150 feet deep with no trees. The other spec on the light's intensity is 4,000 K, which I believe stands for Kelvin. That is the equivalent to doctor office white or blinding white especially, with emphasis on especially, with no shields. These lights should be no higher than 10 feet to prevent white noise and still have shields to the abutters. These lights are in our backyards, are so bright that I am concerned that the light will penetrate lined curtains in my kids' bedrooms. Thank you, Brian Lewis. And I'm not going to read your phone number if that's okay with you, Mr. Lewis.
That's fine.
But he did, but he did include his phone number so we could reach out to him. Uh, thank you for your patience in letting me read that letter. I think, did I, how'd it go, Mr. Lewis, pretty much?
No, that's fine. You did a very nice job.
Great, thank you. Uh, just want to make sure it's accurate and we get it in the record. The same reason we can't use chat, we got to say things out loud so it ends up in the record. Thank you. Now, Kyle, I think you started on working on this and answering the questions. So now I think we all have the points in our, in our mind.
Yep. And, and, and I have, uh, great respect for Mr. Lewis, you know, being in the electrical, uh, industry and, and having a much better understanding of lighting than I do. I am not a, in a lighting engineer by any stretch of the imagination. I have advised the, the, uh, my client that photometric plan is, is, is needed at this site, it, for this site plan. I think part of the response was perhaps there would just be no lights behind Mr. Lewis's property. I said that might be a good first step, but I think we need to have that plan for the planning board's consideration and for Mr. Lewis to be able to see the details and whatever appropriate shielding there might be on the light so that, um, this could address his concerns. I don't have that response or, or, you know, anything more than that tonight to say that by the 23rd, the meeting on the 23rd, I expect to have a drawing that will be in front of the board that will depict what the foot candle levels are. And more details on whatever shielding may or, it may appear on, on those lighting fixtures.
In most, I'm, I'm sorry, Kyle. In most residential properties, the Kelvin on the
In most, I'm, I'm sorry Kyle, in most um residential properties, the Kelvin on the lighting fixtures is no higher than 3,000. They start at 2,700 and then it goes to 3,000 and it goes higher from there. Once you get up around 5,000, it's called a daylight color and it is extremely bright. Um, the only, as far as the height of the poles, the only thing that I can bring to everybody's attention, so while they're driving around at night aimlessly, um, go to McDonald's parking lot and air. That's as far as the height and the color. That's about with what they're offering. These are a little bit brighter. A standard street light is about 5,000 Romans. They're offering, the one they're picking is 6,734. I will be standing in my backyard at midnight and see my shadow on the ground.
Thank you.
Kyle, did you, um, could you go to the sheet that shows the cut on that uh light he's talking about? Bring it up.
If uh you could just give me a moment Kyle, I'll bring that, I'll bring that up. I don't have it at the ready. If you just give me a moment, I'll get to that.
Kyle, take your time.
Yeah.
Uh, so, if I may, Mr. Lewis, and this is not to in any way, I do, I not in any way want to um dilute your, your statement, but um fortunately, I've actually worked with light in my life and many of us uh who have lived in condensed lights are familiar with the names of lighting, not the Kelvin rating of lighting.
Right.
And here in New England, we typically use soft white and warm white as the colors that are marketed by the.
2,700.
2,700 is a warm white.
Yeah, exactly. If, if you don't mind, Mr. Lewis, if I make it through.
That's, that's fine. I didn't need to.
We, we, we typically use warm light because we live in a colder climate here. Mark, lights that are marketed in the southern climate are a brighter white or a cool white.
A cool white.
And we, the cool white starts, if I, and you, by all means, um, help me with this, somewhere around 4,000, 3,700 K and goes up and up and up and up and up.
Yeah, 30, 3,200. Most uh cool whites for us will start at 3,200 K.
Thank you. And as you think about lighting, um, and this is again, not to dilute what you're saying, but when you do a new kitchen and you want a nice light above your cutting area, 4,000 is about where you start. So it gives you a nice bright, highly defined, high defined light, highly defined light.
In a commercial kitchen, yes.
Yeah, and, and you find it in, as it says in the letters, in a doctor's office and things like that where you need high definition for work.
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Crants?
It just, it seems like there's some confusion about the intensity and brightness of the light and the so-called color temperature, which is the quality of the light, warm, cool, daylight, um, overcast, et cetera. So I just want to make it clear that when we talk about 4,000 Kelvin, that's not a reflection of the intensity, it's, it's the color quality of the light, not the intensity. Uh, is, is that, isn't that correct? Wait, I'm not, which is not dismissing Mr. Lewis's concerns at all, but I want to make sure that we're not confusing things because ultimately what we gotta bring down is the luminosity. The, the actual intensity of the light is, is the, is the key thing, isn't that, is that correct, Mr. Lewis?
Luminance is actually the brightness of the light and the Kelvin is the color of the light.
Yeah, that's right.
The light, even though they're, they're suggesting this is a 65 watt, is equivalent to a 65 watt, that's what the fixtures run. It probably is equivalent to maybe a 400 watt metal halide that belongs on the side of a warehouse building.
So, okay.
Okay, so it looks, it looks like we need a decent cut sheet and someone to look at it closely, Kyle, and come back with the photo. Just like you said, the photo, show a plan that generates the light towards the, the streets only and not back towards the neighbors and it's got the photometrics figured out and that's the other.
That's the other thing, that's the other thing I noticed. I did notice that they pulled it away from the entrances of these streets because it is such a white light. If people drive by, it will actually catch your eye and, you know, cause people to look away from what they're actually doing. That's one reason why they don't make streetlights as color. They're, you know, they, they drop this um Kelvin down on the street light so it's not so intensely bright when you actually get blinded when you drive under them. It's more of a safety. The other issue I had was they had, it's so bright and they have 12 new existing poles where they're gonna put them in according to this plan. Now, on the, if they have, and they're adding 12 lights, what are they gonna do with their existing ones that are other there? I can think of four more off the top of my head. This is gonna be like Fenway Park.
If I, if I may, Mr. Lewis, if you would just allow the production of the photometric plan to be before the board and certainly would go to you as well. You know, I, I think that that would, you know, this is an initial request from an owner who is no, also not an electrical engineer, who's not a little illumination engineer, and I would think that once it gets into the hands of those experts who deal with this on a day in, day out basis, that there would be some modification to this.
I will report to that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, this is Chris Valentine at 141 Snake Hill Road. I just want to second what Brian um shared. Um, you know, I've, I've lived behind Cannon Gate uh for the past 10 years approximately and I value uh the friendships that I have with the neighbors there. But the thing that I don't value for the last 10 years is the um, the night light that I've had in my bedroom. Um, and when the construction project started and they pulled out all the um, all the streetlights uh for once in the last 10 years, my bedroom hasn't been illuminated at nighttime. So, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I was interested to see in the letter that um, and again, I didn't I think your concerns about shielding and your concerns about intensity and your concerns about, I call it the throw of the light with the luminosity plan will give us. I think that's all very valid. Um. Your en, the engineer for the project is hearing the concerns, which is a good place to start, as opposed to they bought the lights and they're trying to put them up. Um, I went through our uh bylaws quickly and I have a question for about the height of the lights and stuff like that and how we can make this work. It is always the goal of the planning board since we're your neighbors to make sure that the neighbors' needs are met. So, before we jump into a large argument, let's get the luminosity plan. Let's get, and let's, we've given them information. Let's see where we go with that. Okay, Mr. Valentine and Mr. Lewis?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Your, your concerns are um very valid and I thank you for bringing them to us. Um, that's the lights and I didn't mean to start from the bottom and go back up.
I think, I, I did that on purpose, Jeff. I thought that was a very important topic. I didn't have an answer to. I knew that there would be something more forthcoming. It's a, it's a valid issue and, and there will be more information to come.
Thank you, Kyle. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and one of the things, uh, the plans did get printed out for me and really big, I mean, they're like, I got the huge set guys. But the one thing I didn't do is see where the light post was. It didn't even occur to me to look at that and I'm glad that this got brought to our attention. Um, again, Mr. Lewis, sometimes you do them with volunteers who have other things going on. Unfortunately, uh, I'm guessing like you, I'm an essential employee. I've had very little time off these last 10 weeks.
No, I'm every day.
Yep, exactly. Okay, Kyle, so why don't you jump in on the uh drainage piece, I think is what you were.
Okay, and, and I'm gonna, I'd like to just, since we have touched upon Mr. Lewis's letter, I, you know, I'd like to just say the rest of what I have as would be responses for drainage and then walk through the drainage so that we can understand what, where I'm coming from and addressing his comments and then describe to you what's actually being proposed with the drainage. So, to, in response to the question about, "I'm concerned that the additional parking spots and expanded two-lane driveway will dump more sand, salt, gas, oil into the existing stream with the frogs, turtles and spotted salamanders." What's actually happening is, in short, there is a, a, a I guess a change in the way that the drainage patterns are going to work on the project. And there is this, these red lines, if we can see. This represents an existing low spot that's on this property of which, Mr. Lewis, your lot and uh, I guess Mr. or, or the Donahue family at 143 Snake Hill drain into this low area. And you've got uh several um stacks of wood and so on, and they have a planter box that's here. And this is all a very flat area. So, what's taking place is there's a portion of the, the development that is being uh put in, into this location now and it is being cleaned and what's called pretreated through what is a standard uh DEP practice. Uh, through a tree box filter, which is a 12-foot by 8-foot box with, with, it's gonna have a couple of either shrubs or trees in it. There's a variety of species that work. And what this does is it filters the water. It filters the solids, the, the grit, the sand, the things that are used on the roads for salts and so on. Because these are salt tolerant trees that are put into the, or plants that are put into this tree box filter. And then it will discharge into this lower basin. So, the grade in this basin will be cut down several feet from where it is right now. Still maintaining a appropriate distance to seasonal high groundwater and it will be allowed to infiltrate that way. Um, there's a reason why, you know, Sandy Pond has its name and why Sandy Pond Road has its name. It's very sandy in this area.
Very.
And it's, it's very thirsty. So, we're, we're employing this measure so that we can lose that water into the ground. It achieves another important DEP principle of groundwater recharge. You know, which has to be done, of course, by appropriate pretreatment of the water before it is released into the basin for uh recharge. Now, um, so, that's just number one. I just want you to understand, first of all, that a significant portion of the project area in the middle here is now being put through this series of treatment measures, which is going to reduce the overall load of all those things you mentioned into the discharge that goes through Mr. Valentine's, next to Mr. Valentine's house and under Snake Hill Road. So that's just that one. Um, the next uh kind of comment that you had was about um, the application says 10 parking spaces are being added, but it appears that there's 31 additional spots being added. I can understand your confusion. I'm gonna jump to a page which is very cluttered and I don't expect anybody to, to, to be able to completely read this well. But, you know, but, but I can work up, if it's, if it's helpful, I can, I can draft up a, a uh, you know, more appropriate graphic that would depict this, but in the original site, this is a, this is a depiction of the original site before any improvements were made. There were several park, parallel parking spaces along the entire driveway. And there were, I believe the numbers, there were 29 of them. And so what's happened is because that is somewhat of a constriction for the fire department from a safety standpoint and Cannon Gate, uh, the gentleman who is in charge of their condo association is very concerned about making sure that this is a safer environment. Uh, and for, for those residents to drive through and number also for emergency equipment to be able to get through. So, there are no more parallel parking spaces on the project. There are now all uh, the, the head-in type of parking spaces that are, you see rough graded out there right now. So, those head-in parking spaces, once you, once you count what was existing in, in parallel and look at what's now there proposed as perpendicular, there are 10 additional parking spaces. That's the way the numbers work out. What that results in is some additional pavement areas. And we have a variety of measures, including this basin, that are, we're using to address the increase in stormwater that, that would be discharging from the site to improve the, the water quality of the discharging stormwater and to also reduce uh the total amount of stormwater that's discharging into the stream. So, um, so there were, there are existing throughout the entire development, 96 existing parking spaces that includes those 29 parallels. The proposed number is 106.
So Kyle, I'm sorry, I'm a numbers guy. You did that quickly.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, there's, there's an increase of 10 parking spaces overall.
Yep.
From the existing condition, condition to the proposed condition.
Got it.
So that's, that's the bottom line of it.
So, the delta between the existing and the proposed is a plus 10. However, there's a reconfiguration of 31 spaces to get it done.
That is correct.
Is that?
That, that's generally correct, yes.
Okay, so thank you. Um, one of the things I, I, I'm gonna be honest about, Mr. Lewis, is your comment started, the letter I received from the planning board says that Cannon Gate is adding 10. Um, I of course called Mark Archibald immediately and said, "What letter did I send?" So, um, I don't believe, I don't believe the members of the planning board have seen that letter. I'm not sure where it came from.
I think it's the abutters notice.
Thank you. I, we'll get a copy of, we have a copy of it, okay? I just, given, given where we are in the world of events.
It isn't the abutters notice.
Okay, thank you. So, that's something that we lean on the applicant to do, Mr. Lewis, and send out. And it's, it's good. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we all, we all know where that is. So it's a plus gain of 10. But a reconstruction of a fair amount of space on the property to get to accomplish this. Um, and I believe you also did, there was one regrade, if I, there was a crown of the road that was added. Um, I, I wanna reach and move this. Kyle, could you s- uh?
Yeah, the dry well at the other end by Snake Hill.
Yeah, the one that goes to Snake Hill.
So, let me, let me walk through one, one, one step at a time. I, I saw one more set of questions uh from Mr. Lewis saying that, "Are they redirecting the storm drain water into their retainment pond?" Partially yes, is the answer. "Is this in conjunction with a DEP file permit for dumping runoff stormwater that is contaminating into our wetlands?" Um, the conservation commission will be receiving a request for determination of applicability for this project that they had previously granted. Um, so I hope I've explained that there, in, in part, that there is a great deal of uh improvements to the overall water quality that'll be leaving the site, leaving this development. Um, and let me just go a little bit further into that. So most of that is taking place on this south end of the, of the property. Again, uh, just to recap, there's a fair amount of water. Uh, if you are interested in what a drainage divide is, that's uh, this red line represents the total amount of area that's heading towards this basin. A fair portion of that is heading through this tree box filter from the development and into this basin. The rest of it is, you know, part of your roof, part of 143 Snake Hill's roof and your backyard heading into this depression. So that's, unless there's any other question about that, I'm gonna just move over to the other part of the, of the project where there was a nominal amount of discharge to Snake Hill Road. The DPW said, "We don't like your nominal amount of additional water going to Snake Hill Road because there are drainage issues along here" as Mr. Valentine is familiar with, along his property, and we certainly don't want to worsen that condition. So, looking at a, a, a possible combination of methods to treat and, and slow down and reduce the amount of stormwater leaving this property, this uh patching that's here, uh, it will, will be pervious pavement. Um, the groundwater in this particular location is fairly deep. Um, and so we, we have the ability to do that and still meet all the requirements of separation to groundwater for any infiltrating practice. So what that means is this basically comes out of the equation from a regulatory calculation standpoint. Anything that falls on this is gonna go into the ground. And that's, that's a, that's a big plus. Every, you know, DP likes pervious pavements and so it's got all of its requisite uh stone layers and choker courses and it's got a reservoir stone layer underneath before it then can get down into the groundwater. It fil, the pavement effectively filters the water before it is recharged into the ground. So that alone was not sufficient to bring this back to parity uh with the conditions. So, there's still an additional amount of the road that will get into, as it's, it's pushed off to the side uh, that will get into a sediment for bay. It's inside, handle it and there's a, there's a check dam, basically stone uh filter that then goes to what is a, a beehive grate that then drops down into a um, a dry well. It's a rectangular dry well. Uh, it's four foot by eight foot. It's uh no slouch. Um, it's a big, it's a big item. Um, so that is the, the set of measures over on this side that'll bring the stormwater discharge on the Snake Hill Road back kind of generally to what was the existing condition. So, you know, um, on one side, we are doing additional cleaning of the water and retention and recharge of the groundwater system. On the other side, we are doing additional recharge and cleaning for that recharge in, in these systems. Uh, over at Sandy Pond Road, there're existing, uh, leaching galleys that are, um, that come in from the road. So there's really nothing that leaves the site at this point. So, um, those are the drainage measures that are being employed to address this proposal. Uh, there's one more thing, I forgot. So the majority of this property had been, if I may just zoom out a second, the majority from this point over and from this point over down the road, uh, had come to a pair of catch basins, um, in the property here. So we're overall reducing the amount of impervious areas that are reaching these two catch basins. So that is resulting in a net decrease in the amount of water that's going to the stream channel that runs next to Mr. Valentine's house and prob, and on his property for, for some distance. It may be closer to the property line than what's, what's shown in this blue line. I'm not exactly certain. Uh, but I suspect it's on his property. And, and so
Sorry.
There's, there's, um, the DPW had concerns about the condition of this corrugated metal culvert. They requested that we certify its condition. The community got, uh, basically RotoRooter out there with a camera and special, uh, water jet equipment to be able to, essentially they pull back any sediments that are in the pipe and they suck it out from the catch basin. And so it doesn't blow it downstream. It sucks it back, cleans it out. So they cleaned out the pipe. They ran the little, uh, robot TV car down there and they found sure enough at the end, you know, roughly 15 feet or so, the invert of the culvert had, had kind of rotted away, rusted away. The rest of it is in fairly decent condition and is, is served, you know, workable, acceptable. So we're also proposing to remove that last section of the culvert to where it, it's still got a good invert and then just shape the, the ditch to be able to receive the water, make sure that we reinforce it, uh, with appropriate turf reinforcement. And, and then with, and then that's, that's the treatment there in order to make sure that that remains adequate and serviceable and maintainable. So those are the three areas, the basin with the tree box filter, uh, the fix of the culvert end, the permeable pavement with a, with a dry well, um, are measures to, that are being employed in order to, um, improve the water quality and reduce the amount of water leaving the site, um, during storm events.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a quick question, if I may, and then I want to turn it over to the board members who have questions, just, it's just for clarity. The pervious surface that you showed on the, on the, that part there, there's other, that's okay, there are other parking areas that have a similar cross hatching on but are a different color? Is there some?
Oh. Yeah, my, yeah, I should use a different symbol. So we
There's some blue and some red.
Yeah, there are. Thank you, Jeff. The, the previous, uh, the original design of this was made by, um, a firm in Andover. These are their drawings that you're looking at, that I'm drawing on top of.
Okay.
And so some of these parking areas, okay, there's one more thing I forgot to mention that's very important. Uh, so these parking areas that have the X through them are parking not to be built. There's two spaces here, three spaces here, and two spaces here. It was understood that, you know, the location of these was not ideal, not only for the residents, but also was getting pretty doggone close to the property line. And so those were found to be undesirable before I ever got to the project and it was decided that they should move to where the blue is located. There's one additional here, three here, and three here. So there's seven, shifting to seven. So it's as many as they originally had proposed.
And it'll still, still remain pervious surface?
No. I, so my mistake for confusing the, the graphic legend of this, uh, these, these are not proposed. Uh, we're, we're not as deep to groundwater in, in these locations as we would like. Uh, the, the community suggested that if it helped that they would make it, uh, pervious pavement. I let them know that the groundwater in these locations is not as far down as it is in this location. So it didn't make sense to do it. It would not really serve their needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so one other important thing to mention, I'm sorry, I forgot in the application, is the fact that there'll be a six foot tall white vinyl fence added for the screening of this parking that is closer than 10 feet to the property line. And I believe that there's a, a letter, um, that this owner has, has issued in support of this application. He likes the idea of the fence and, um, and, and that's, that's part of this application as well.
Thank you. Other member, other question? Is she on?
I have a couple of comments.
I was going to say comments or questions from members of the board, please. Thank you, Kyle. Go ahead, Mr. Diskin.
I, I'd like to make a positive comment that, you know, when we first looked at this a couple of months ago, a month and a half ago, we didn't have any test pits done. We didn't have any of this consideration of the, um, onsite filtration. There were a lot of things that were lacking and the project was moving without supervision, we thought. So I am, um, quite pleased with the progress that the condominium people have made and that the neighbors are involved and that, uh, the engineer has, has brought this up to the level of approval that we'd like to see with a project like this. And it, to me, it's showing, um, a level of cooperation, which makes me feel good about the project. And I hope we, I think we can get a good project at, at the end.
Okay. Um, I'm going to jump in here for a minute, guys. Um, I have just been, um, informed by our IT department that we have about 20 minutes or so left in our time this evening. Um, I forgot to mention at the beginning, we have a time limit on this meeting. Um, I do not want to, uh, give, I, I don't want to miss giving people an opportunity to take care of some stuff, but I'm going to ask you to, uh, we will continue, we, Mr. Valentine and Mr. Lewis, this will be continued, obviously. Okay? Um, so please don't think that we're going to rush because we want to get somewhere. Open meeting laws are what they are, and I have to have this as an open meeting and we have until 8:15, we can go off air, which is a requirement we are currently living under. The world of COVID, to quote you, Mr. Bertrand. So, um, other comments from board members? Questions?
I have one more.
Please.
I'd like to have an assurance that the, um, this would be treated like a standard site plan so that at the end we'd have a final sign off by the engineer and an as-built of sorts that would indicate that the, the work of the, the, uh, project was completed in accordance with the design and the engineer would stamp a letter and sign off on that.
And I just have one more quick comment on the electrical I just thought of. As, as the board members, um, process this and make their decision, um, the outside lighting is not on time clocked. It's on something called a photo light, meaning when it's dark out, it comes on automatically. When the sun comes up, it shuts off. So these lights are going to be on all night long.
Well, the technology today with controls, they should be able to figure out how to control this system with a, a lighting control system that dims it, shuts it off at 12:30 and turns it on at three in the morning, whatever they want to do. So I guess you're saying, Brian, that we should ask them to consider a lighting control system as part of the lighting package so that they would have better control over the, it'd save money. In the long run, they'll save money.
Right. They don't have money in their budget to, um, well, they, they were supposed to maintain a fence in my backyard. They never, they took it down with no problem, but they never maintained it or put it back up. So everything that they have told me has been off or altered. It's never, it's never been full spot on. So that's, I'm just bringing things up to you as.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So
Mr. Tillison, can I make a comment? Is it a butter?
Yes, Mr. Garber, go ahead, please, Bob.
I live at 78 Sandy Pond Road. I own 76 and 78.
Bob, we lost you. Well, we'll miss, we'll wait till Bob gets back on. Uh, let's keep going and if Bob joins us again. Um, yeah, Bob's an across the street neighbor for, um, Cannon Gate. Um, other questions or comments from members of the board? Hearing none. Any comments from any of the, um, again, Kyle, could you, would you mind not sharing, please? Oh, there's Bob.
Yeah. So there's no groundwater. I live right across the street from the main entrance of Snake, of Sandy Pond Road. There's not going to be any groundwater coming, uh, uh, yeah, that's it, I think, right there. Thank you. Uh, yeah, there's not going to be any groundwater coming out onto, uh, Sandy Pond Road, is my understanding from Mr. Bertrand.
It's my understanding that the water's leaving Sandy Pond Road and entering Cannon Gate, Bob.
That's right.
That was my understanding too, but I just wanted to make sure
Yeah.
when the paving was done. And Mr. Burshin, thank you very much. You're very kind and polite and, uh, courteous to me with the information I greatly appreciated.
My pleasure, sir.
Thank you.
Just drop out of the meeting at some point, but thank you all very much.
Thanks, Bob. Jonathan, is this about the issue with Cannon Gate? You held your hand up, Jonathan. Okay.
No.
For the discussion on Cannon Gate for this evening, guys. I do, I do want to get through a couple more items if we can, uh, before we loop, before we get, um, kicked off the air. Um, you're, uh, you're all welcome to stay.
Mr. Chair, I do have a, a question.
Yes.
Uh, my, my, my name's Curtis Donahue, one of the butters at 143 Snake Hill.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so I live between Mr. Valentine and Mr. Lewis. I understand.
Excuse me, are you 143?
Yeah, 143. Yep.
Great. We need that for the record. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Go ahead.
Um, I understand there's a time limit, so I'll keep it brief. And it sounds like this is going to be a continued discussion, so I look forward to a few future meetings. Um, I would like to see a little more information on the basin that's planned to be, uh, created with the, the, the tree box filter, because it sounds like that, basically a manmade pond, kind of like a small pond, is going to be right in my backyard. Um, and Mr. Valentine can, uh, so support me on this, but our properties, because they, um, are right alongside of that stream, I think we're both very sensitive to, uh, water overflow. I understand there's been some measures added to, uh, decrease the amount of excess rainfall that goes into that stream. My driveway does flood in the summers when, uh, there's heavy rainfall. So just seeing more, um, ponding, if you will, of water was a little concerning. So I look forward to seeing more information on that.
Thank you. I think that's a very valid concern.
At the 100 year event, Mr. Chairman, there is, there is a small amount of additional water ponding that happens back there on the 100 year event.
Thank you. So, um, if I may translate that, Mr. Donahue, um, storms are looked at as how frequently they happen. I was doing a project about seven years ago. We had 300 year events within, in, in the space of almost four weeks. It was really horrible. Also, so that you know, the DPW, uh, double checks all the calculations that are being submitted by Mr. Bertrand and GPR. And so we will work with that. I do not, I only have a partial set of the plans. I'm assuming that there is a cut, there, there's a, um, a detail of the tree box, Kyle. And also Absolutely. Great. So one of the things we, I'm going to ask each, Mr. Donahue and Mr. Valentine and Mr. Lewis, as we get these plans, they are available downtown. I know it's difficult to get in, but I'm going to ask you to keep in touch with the planning office, with Heather and with Mark, and I'm going to ask Mark and Heather to be a little bit sensitive to this as stuff comes up, that we make sure that we forward the information, um, to folks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Heather's done a tremendous job.
Yeah, it's, 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 believe it or not, it's what we do. Um, but thank you very much, thank you very much for that. It's a little extra effort on our part now, but everybody having the information. We're not trying to catch anybody or anything. We're trying to get it, as someone said about our earlier project, trying to get it right as right as we can.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Any further comments on this issue? Otherwise I would take a, uh, motion to continue, please.
Thank you to Heather and Mark.
Mr. Chairman, um, when is this going to come back to the next agenda?
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
So I had, Kyle's just used the international symbol for 23rd. So that you understand the process and protocol, we open a hearing, we continue the hearing from meeting to meeting to meeting. It is assumed that if a meeting, COVID comes up again and we don't meet, it will just push to the next one. But at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this hearing until the next meeting and they'll put the date on it. And who's going to give you the motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll move that the planning board, um, continue the hearing for the site plan review for Cannon Gate on Sandy Pond Road to the next planning board meeting on June 23rd.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Oh, Kyle had suggested.
No, I, no, I was just waving goodbye. I want to be efficient with the time. Thank you very much.
Kyle, that's Thank, uh, thank you all. You all are welcome to see how, uh, how, how sausage is made, if you want to stick around, but we're going to take care of, um, some announcements as old and new business. It's just all housekeeping. And I appreciate you all being, uh, joining us on Zoom. It's not
Meetings are terribly, terribly fun and enjoying. Get on with it. Enjoy.
Well, what's nice is we have to be brief because we have a window. Fantastic, guys. Thank you.
Bye now.
Thank you.
And Kyle, thanks again for all you've done on all these three projects. Okay, guys, next, next we have town planner update. Mark, you got a lot or you got a little? What do you got?
So basically I just wanted to mention that, um, uh, DPW is preparing some new storm water regulations that they would like the planning board to consider the adoption of. And I told them, I told them that, uh, you know, with our busy agenda, that if they could wait till July, would that be fine? And, and they indicated that yes. Uh, so I handed a few of those out at the site visit. I believe I sent those to the other members, so please look at those. Uh, we can discuss it on July 14th.
Thank you. I would actually reiterate, um, we lean on DPW a lot, so if you guys can front load that a little bit, I'd really appreciate it. And now you can vote me out as chair. But, um, we, giving them, they're busy also these days, so if you can take a look at them, have any questions, uh, forward them to Mark, that'd be fantastic. Um, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mark. Um, if that's it for town planner update announcements, yes, I'm sorry, Jonathan.
No, Jeff, I'd like to make one quick comment. Uh, I did quickly, I did read through the stormwater regulations, and I know we're going to have a deeper discussion later, but the, the, uh, what we'll notice when you read it, that there's, uh, distinctions between major projects and minor projects. But unless I misread the document, I couldn't find anywhere in it, in what distinguishes a minor from a major project, what the threshold is. And I think that any draft of this document, that's got to be one of the first things that's there upfront. What is the official designation of minor? What's major so that we can, you know, uh, conform appropriately? Thank you.
I think we're probably dealing with something like, uh, acronyms. The folks doing the work are familiar with it. I'm, I'm guessing it's a dollar threshold, to be honest with you, Jonathan.
Yeah, I just need to know what it is.
Yep.
Yeah, I think
I'll look into that and get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a comment on the same thing, so I, I backed that up. We basically needed some kind of a definition, you know, that he should add. But the other thing I was going to ask, Mark, is if you could correspond back to Dan Van Skelwick, that we have stormwater regulations in place now. Could he highlight what we're looking at as the potential difference of the newest, the newest features or whatever? Some kind of a little list for us to look at as a board? So we don't have to concentrate on necessarily the minutia of all the requirements, but the major, uh, points, I guess, would be helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I, I was talking to somebody today who asked me if I could do a stormwater calculation for them. I said no.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah.
I can, I can, I can handle curve rate, curve radiuses, but not stormwater. Thank you. If that's it for the announcements, um, I want, uh, initiative, announcements, old business and new business, I've got a couple of things. Mr. Diskin, do you have anything that fits in on an older new?
I don't.
Wow. Mr. Krantz does.
Yes, I do. I, I, I have a proposal for managing the meeting minutes. I wanted to run by the board and by Heather and Mark. And my suggestion is if it's a, if, if this is legal, if it conforms to the open meeting law, if it's acceptable to everyone here, is that I would like, i, i, Heather, if Heather, if you could get me the is that I would like, Heather, if Heather, if you could get me the minutes a week before the meeting, I promise you that I will get edits to you within 24 hours. And then after that preliminary run, then that could be included in the package to distribute to the board members. I think that this would alleviate some of the issues or concerns about the edits, just make it a more streamlined process. Would that be acceptable?
The issue with that is I don't always have the meeting minutes done with everything else I have going on. Sometimes, as you know, I don't even have them ready for the meeting. So I do my best to get them done the Thursday before, but to have them done a week beforehand, with meetings being on Tuesday, that literally would give me three, two and a half days to type them up.
That's fair. What would be, what would be a timeframe that would work for you? Because maybe I can adjust mine for you.
I can try to get them done for you the Wednesday. So that would be like a week in a day, just because the Tuesday is our long day here in Town Hall, but I can't always guarantee that, but I will do that.
Yeah, that would be fine.
The Wednesday following.
That would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would, I would ask that we make sure that they are done. Questions of substance are for the whole board, questions of editing. I appreciate
Yes, they're all just minor corrections.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
I actually have something on these minutes, believe it or not, but that's okay. We'll get there. It's, we have a few minutes. One other request we've made in the past and oh, I meant to ask at the beginning, there are no bonds or covenants that came up since the last meeting, correct? You're on mute.
Correct. No bonds or
Covenant releases. Okay. That's something that I really want to move into everyone so we don't miss any. Under old business, and Mark, actually, Mark, you mentioned something to me earlier today about it. If anyone hasn't been down Central Avenue while, they finally put the fascia on the building and the siding. And it actually looks better than I thought. I hate to say, I shouldn't say it like that, but if the project's coming together over there, it's worth a drive-by. But this brings up something we've talked about before, and that is we got a lot of open things, a lot of irons in the fire around town, and here in Air, we typically move hard to get a project to the starting line. And then the developer or the proponent doesn't always take that first step over the starting line. We tend to lose sight of what's going on. So Mark had asked if we could, going forward, just may not be every meeting, but any substantial landmarks, if you will, in projects would be very helpful for the board. And even send them out during, between the meetings. I mean, I go around town all the time. I see stuff, and Ken and I are talking, and Jonathan and I are talking, or Julie and I are talking. We see stuff. We mention it to each other. So that would be very helpful, any, 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 not landmark, landmarks on stuff. A question, have you had any applications for accessory uses yet?
You mean accessory apparel?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of. Heather, we haven't received any.
Yeah.
Okay, great. There was one that I was discussing with building a few weeks ago, and I
Were those going to go through planning or zoning?
They go through zoning, but we put in a bylaw out there, so I want to take a look. I want to know if there's anything happening.
Yeah, I said, no, they went through a different office. If they go to the ZBA, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get notified until the interdepartmental review sheet went out.
Yep. Well, if we, if we hear about it, that'd be great, just so we know what's going on. Something came up over the weekend, and I didn't get a chance to thank Mr. Bertrand while he was online. Sightwalk. And I'm going to bring this up to 64,000 feet. General etiquette and info about sightwalks. We discovered that we didn't, we weren't all on the same page in the sidewalk on Saturday, and I don't want to rehash what happened, but I think it's probably not a bad idea that when we're going to go on a sidewalk here in town, if we can get some specific information, if there are, if there's a need for it. We were in tick-infested land with bugs this time. We weren't in an open field or in a parking lot. So it would just be great if we could have a quick reminder on that. If that'll work for folks, okay? I'm also going to ask that we be punctual. The proponents are paying for the person being there. Okay? Enough said?
No, I have a that's okay.
Please, of course, no.
The only way I found out that the time had changed, Mark, just as a heads up, was I happened to just, you guys know I'm not checking this email as regularly as the rest of my life. And it was hidden in a 14 Washington Street email at the bottom that the time had changed for the site visit for the Air Solar 2. And it was like magic that I saw it, and had I burned an extra half an hour coming early, it just in an already stressful time for all of us, and I know how hard you and Heather are working. I'm just so grateful you bold but again, it wasn't even an email titled "Site Plan Time Change This Saturday" or anything.
Yeah, I actually had the site, I had the time wrong also, and that's how it ended up in that email. Because while we were making the timing, we discussed 8:30, we discussed 9 o'clock, I forget exactly what happened, and I jotted down the wrong time. So, but no, I think we probably need to reach out and make sure. And if it's a phone chain or something like that, we've got to make it work. Please. I want it to hold an election tonight. We're not going to. We have four minutes, and I want to talk about some minutes, the minutes from before. But I will put it on the table that, as is tradition in the town of Air, when there is an election, and by the way, congratulations, Nathan, your first successful election, municipal election.
Yes, thank you, Town of Air.
It's fun. Nathan actually hit me up really early in the morning congratulating me on it. I thought that was great. You all realize
Jeff, you got nine votes for Assessor.
I almost became the Assessor. I didn't even know I was up
What was that about?
I think I talk about taxes too often on Facebook. It's their way of taking care of me. If we can, I don't think we're going to get through both. We're not going to get to the minutes. If I can ask, can we turn to the minutes for May 26th? And I appreciate all the work you've done on it, and I would go to the second page. First paragraph, second line, second half of the line. The whole sentence is, the proposal is now, is to now keep all the parking on 14 Washington Street, which can do but need they need to meet. I just think we got extra words in there. Okay? Thanks. I couldn't quite figure that out, and I honestly didn't have a chance to jump in on that. The other comment I had on this, and by the way, Jonathan, thank you very much for your edits on this. Go to page four. The second line, would it be the third paragraph, it's a single line, starts with Mr. Bertrand stated, "The area is very steep." And there is, I'm going to suggest the wording to be, and there is an approximately, approximately a 24-foot elevation change. Strike the words "and about" and put in "approximately" up. Thank you.
And we also might as well correct the spelling on his name throughout.
I did that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And under new business at the bottom of the page, Jim Tilson stated that he would like to add to the list of items the board needs to review, the possibility of a noise bylaw. I think more accurate would say the possibility of updates to the current noise bylaw. We have a noise bylaw. But I think it was, it's showing its age. And those are edits that I would make, suggestions I would make for the 26th. I had nothing for the 12th. Does anybody else have suggestions for the 26th, please? Hearing none? Can we get it done in less than a minute? Take a motion to the 26th? To accept
I move to approve the minutes, minutes for the APB meeting, May 26th, 2020.
Would you want to also include the 12th? We'll get it all done at once?
And, and, and approve the minutes for the APB, May 12th meeting, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're going to lose it. We're going off air, guys. Thank you so much. Be safe.